Before I call this meeting to order, the councilor, Meghan Chorlton, is here, subbing in as acting mayor due to Mayor Ives' absence. So please bear with me and remember patience is a virtue. Before we adopt the agenda, I just want to make sure that all councillors got the amended version, the addendum for the agenda. So I ask for adoption of the amended agenda, please.
Good.
All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. The delegation today, we have an impressive group here representing the Municipal Insurance Association of B.C., MIA membership. And we have four of them here. It's impressive to speak. We have a podium here that you can speak. Generally, we shoot for 10 minutes, but we're anxious to hear what you have to say, so that is our aiming time. But we'll carry on then. So welcome, Thomas Barnes, Megan Charlton, Glen McLaughlin, and Mayor of Qualcomm Beach, Tunis Westbrook.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and talk to you. My name is Tom Barnes, and I'm the chief executive officer of the Municipal Insurance Association. With me is Glen McLaughlin, our director of insurance, and Megan Charlton, our director of member services, and Mayor Westbrook, who is a member of our board of directors and has been past chair of our board of directors. And let me just start by telling you, we might in some ways look like a bunch of insurance executives, but we're not from Toronto. We're all part of this organization that is a partnership of B.C. local governments, and we're all from here. I grew up in Campbell River. Megan was born in North Vancouver. Glen has an interesting background, because he spent over 30 years with the city of Richmond in a number of positions, but as a buyer of bylaw enforcement, also risk management. And in that capacity, he spent 10 years in our board of directors. When he retired from the city of Richmond, we hired him as a staff member to take over our fairly new position of director of insurance. So we're all from here, and all we do is municipal insurance. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to just speak to the numbers about what the cost of our program is and what its objectives are. And then Glen will talk about our products, and Megan will talk about our value-added services. And Tunis is just going to talk about what we aim to be as an integral part of the communities of local governments of B.C. What we ask is to judge us by the criteria that our owners have given us to meet. And our owners are you. The town of Comox 30 years ago was one of 144 local governments of B.C. that was tired and in a difficult position because of the volatility in the commercial insurance market. And so the UVCM said, "We can't take this up and down of insurance prices, and sometimes we have coverage and sometimes we don't." And the only alternative they could come up with was to get local governments of B.C. to form a partnership and to provide their own coverage. And we've been doing that for over 30 years. The thing is, when you and the other founding partners forgus, they didn't give us a mandate to be the cheapest insurer all the time, because they'd been done with that. They gave us the mandate to be stable, to provide stability to local government insurance. And stability is cost-effective, as measured, over a period of time, not from year to year. And what I want to do is look back over 15 years, and the materials we provided to our Page 7 of your agenda, the page numbers I quoted, I'll start with that index, but I will mentally try to demonstrate my dexterity with math by adding 7 to each of the page numbers that I have. So what are the criteria? How do we measure stability over the period of time? Our members often aspire to have each year's budget be kept to an increase that is a combination of inflation and population growth. And so if we go back 15 years to 2004, there we are. In 2004, we charged our members $12.1 million to run the MIA B.C. Now, since that time, inflation and B.C.'s population growth has increased by 56%. And if our cost to our members had matched population growth and inflation, we would have billed our members over $18 million in 2018 to run the program. In actual fact, we billed our members $12.3 million in 2018 to run our program. That's an increase of this cost of over 2%, just over 2% over 15 years. So overall, we would venture to say very few of our members' expenses on their budgets have increased by only 2% over 15 years. So at the bigger picture view, we think we have done a pretty good job of providing stability to what is inherently a volatile financial product. Now, how has the town of Comox done over that period of time? Now, this diagram, if you want to have a closer look at it, is on Page 16 plus 7, 23 of your materials. But what we see there is the green line is the benchmark for the assessment. Now, as I explained in the materials, there are two elements to the price we charge our members. One is their share, it's based on population, essentially, their per capita share of running the program. And that's called our program assessment. And that is, I think that's the orange line. Yes, that's the orange line. Now, in 2004, 15 years ago, the program assessment for the town of Comox was $109,000. I'm sorry, no, wrong. It was $86,000. Now, if we had have kept pace with inflation at Comox's population growth over 15 years, that would be that green line there, and Comox would be paying something in excess of $120,000, close to $120,000, I think if I'm reading that right. Instead, last year, Comox's assessment was $97,000. That's the orange line. But that's not what Comox paid, because over the course of, we also have a second element, and this is something that's not my personal favorite, but the founders, you of the MIA, decided 30 years ago that there had to be an experience rating aspect whereby the members that had claims would be charged more, and the members who didn't have claims would be charged less. And there's been a couple of iterations of that program. But if you combine, the way that works is revenue neutral to us. These surcharges we make to members with more claims are used to pay for discounts for members with fewer claims. And don't worry, Comox has always been a pretty darn good risk. So that blue line represents the total cost that Comox has paid over the last 15 years. The red line represents the $106,000 that Comox was charged in 2004, and if that had have been increased, it would have gone up to just over 120. That's the total benchmark, right? And then the green line is what their assessment would have been. But you can see from that blue line, it consistently, after the first five years, it consistently is lower than what the yellow line is. And that's because Comox had a few claims 2015 years ago, and so they were actually contributing, their surcharges to the experience rating program. As those claims worked through the system, Comox started getting more and more discounts. And it's significantly kept at a discounted level until a couple of years ago. And since then, there's been a bit of an uptick in claims, and as a result, Comox's discount from the experience rating program has slowly been reduced. And it will, in all honesty, I'd love to tell you, we know you're looking to save costs, so we've sharpened our pencil, but that's not what our members want us to do. They want us to be stable and consistent, and they want us to reflect actual experience in the rates. If you don't want our organization to run that way, it's up to you to change it. It's that simple. We just do what you tell us. So what we've had happen over the last two or three years is because of claims at Comox, they have become a bad risk, but they've dropped at the pecking order of the 170, now 170 municipalities that are members of the MIA B.C. And so over each year, they've lost about 10% of their discount. And so their actual rates have gone down in the last, the actual rates have gone down for Comox over the last 15 years by about 20%, but because of the operation of the experience rating program, the costs have gone up over the last couple of years. And it's going to take these claims, because the experience rating program is based on a five-year claims history, it's going to take another three years for those claims to work their way through the system, at which point I would expect that Comox will revert to that, to where it was for 10 years between significant claims, to back to where it's getting the maximum experience rating discount, and their costs will return to the stability that Comox has already enjoyed. And the only thing I would tell you is, before you get too cocky about what a great risk you are, talk to somebody from Port MacNeil. They've been a member of the MIA B.C. for over 30 years, and they have yet to file the first claim. That's a pretty impressive track record. But the other thing I'll say is, since your owners of us were regulated licensed financial institution, there are benefits to ownership other than just insurance costs. And like any successful financial institution, we return money to our members, we keep some as equity because our regulator likes to see that. And over the last 15 years, the town of Comox has received $135,000 in dividends back to the MIA B.C. It's received $38,000 of risk management grants to help your community safer. I was just looking at the results of one of them, which is that fence separating the playground from the parking lot in your park there. And there are additional $16,000 in risk management grant eligibility available to the town. And in that 15-year period, Comox's equity position has increased by over half a million dollars. You add all of us up together, the financial return to the town of Comox has been $46,600 per year for the last 15 years. And that, I believe, is a very good bit of business for the town. It's something, we've got 15 years of a track record, you can count on that stability and that fiscal return happening for the next 10 or 15 years. The only other thing I'm going to say is, on Page 12, I think we deal with what it takes to compare costs and coverage. I mean, I've got 30 years' experience as an insurance lawyer, and even I don't like reading insurance policies, but if you're going to, you've got to compare apples and apples. And we know who our competitors are, we know the line they pedal. All I'm going to tell you is, you don't need all the coverage. I guarantee you, you don't need all the coverage you've been told you need. I guarantee you need higher limits than you've been told that you can settle for. I included at Page 49, a little article about the town of Lockington and the close to $80 million that that town of 5,000 in Ontario has had to pay since its problems. And secondly, if you don't like the coverage, if you don't like the program, you own it. You can change that. And we do that almost every year. We make changes to the program to provide our members with the coverage they need. And with that, I'm going to ask, speaking of coverage, I'm just going to ask Glen to come and talk to you a little bit about our coverage.
Mr. Chair, so I'm going to just speak briefly about the insurance program that the MIA brings forward. Mr. Barnes talked about stability of pricing, but we also want to make sure that we've got the coverage there for local governments. We have an insurance product together that specifically caters to the delivery of local government services. We're well alive to the activities that you do, and Mr. Barnes spoke, I spent some 30-some-odd years in local government, touching all their aspects of business, and also looking after their liabilities. Our liability protection agreement is crafted specifically for that. And when it's not addressing an issue that our members, they talk to us. We have member advisory groups that we solicit to say, "Is there anything else that you're out there doing that we can help you with?" And they give us the feedback. We go out and we do the research, we take it to our board to say, "We think our members want this," and then we bring it to you, our members, at the annual general meeting and say, "Here's the situation, here's what's going to be the impact either on pricing or coverage, A or N, and our members go about it." And it typically gets embodied in our LPA. For 95% of our years, we've made amendments to our LPA responding to local government's liability concerns. In the package, and I think it's on Page 42 or Appendix 3, there's a whole bunch of insurance terms that we cover and where we respond to. And we responded to those liability concerns with $40 million of coverage for each and every claim that you do. We hive off a piece back to the reinsurance market that we just do as a pass-through expense to you, but we believe that that is money well spent, because that's the sleep-at-night security that you get for you and your community, that if you have a really bad day, your taxes aren't going to be impacted by whether it be a Lockerton or whatever your bad day looks Our program, in terms of the way we price our liability program, equitable, transparent, and flexible. I've gotten into the complexities of our program. I couldn't think of a program that is more fair and delivered equitably across the membership that we have out there. Want to talk briefly on the property program? We started this about four years ago, and we've responded to your requests for proposals, and we'd be happy to do so again. But our property program has taken off, that we've got a good chunk of our membership that have joined on. These are members that recognize their role as an owner of our organization, and they see that the value that we bring to their communities, because the value we bring is exactly that to their communities. We're not sending any profits to Bay Street or Wall Street. We reinvest back into our communities through the grants and the dividends that Mr. Barnes spoke about. We also have an ancillary insurance program. We created a broker charter, because we only underwrite the property and the liability. My experience is, local governments get involved in a whole array of commercial activities that wouldn't necessarily be covered by our liability protection agreement. So once we understand what it is you're doing, we make sure that any liability concerns arising from that is your nature of operation, we go get you coverage for that. And what that means is that we consider ourselves a partner to you in your delivery of services. So the more dialogue that we have, the more value that we can bring to you, showing that your liability is covered and giving you the insurance products that you need. Sometimes we look at it kind of like the all-inclusive resort that you go to. We want to be the one-stop shop for all your insurance needs, and that we're going to accommodate whatever you want, because as Mr. Barnes says, you own us. Thanks.
Thank you, Glen. So I'm Megan Charlton, I am the director of member services, and part of my job is to deliver the added value services to our members. And so on Page, I think it's about 17 to 21, we've gone through and listed all of the services and described them comprehensively. So I'm not going to sit here and rattle off all the services for you today, but I do want to share a brief story that kind of illustrates our approach to our members in terms of our delivering our added value services and the value that our members derive from those. A couple of years ago, I was in my office, it was a hot August afternoon, and I received an email from one of our lawyers, Jeff. Now, Jeff was on holidays on an island that's very close to here, and he'd been renting a cottage for a couple of weeks. And as one does, when they rent a cottage, they don't rely on the municipal or local garbage collection, they take it to the landfill, or the transfer station. So he had taken his refuse and his recycling to the transfer station. And now, something you should know about Jeff, he's been defending municipal liability claims for us for many years, and in fact, he's defended a number of transfer station claims, one in which he lost quite terribly, and one in which he won and was a great success. But Jeff noticed something immediately when he got to the transfer station, and he took some photos, and he sent me this email, and he said, "Megan, I'm very concerned about something I saw at the transfer station. You may want to reach out to the member and provide some risk management advice." And when I looked at the photos, I saw what he was talking about. The transfer station refuse bin was flush with a platform at which members of the public stand, and so it would be very easy for someone to slip and fall into the transfer station bin, which we knew had happened on a number of occasions, in particular the two cases that Jeff had defended. And so I thought, first of all, I was impressed that one of our lawyers was thinking about a member while he was on vacation, but I also was, I thought, "What a great idea." And I sent an email to the member, and I said, rather than saying, "You know, we've noticed this risk, and we're very concerned about it, and we need you to address it right away," we reached out with a proactive, positive approach, a supportive approach, and I said, "Listen, we have a number of services that you can use to help you address this risk if you choose to do so. First of all, you could access our casual advice program, which you subscribe to, and as an aside, the town of Comox is subscribed to since its inception in 2013. For $500 a year, they can call a lawyer, list on a company, on an unlimited number of issues, and get 30 minutes of free legal advice." So I said, "You could get some free legal advice about your liability risks and how to address them. Or we could send out one of our loss control inspectors to inspect the entire transfer station and prepare a report detailing all of the risks, and then you can use risk management grant funds to address those risks, so you can resolve the issues. Or we can give you some advice based on our experience defending municipal liability claims. And in particular, we recommend that you install some sort of a barrier or guardrail and install some signage, and you can pay for that with risk management grant money." So our member said, "Thank you very much, and we'll look at it and we'll get back to you." And I didn't hear from her for a few months, and then right before Christmas, I got an email. And the email from the member said, "Thank you so much for reaching out and supporting our community. I wanted to follow up and tell you what had happened," and she had attached some photos of the transfer station with a guardrail and signage installed that they had used risk management grant funds. And I was so excited that our members had taken our advice and implemented it and used our grant money, and I asked them if we could interview them for an article in our quarterly newsletter, Tigbit, so we could share the information with other members, because that's the whole point of being part of the community of the MIA B.C., is being able to support each other and share information. And they agreed to do that, and then we featured this issue at our risk management conference. I know that town of Comox staff have attended the risk management conference through a session that Jeff delivered, talking about the case that he won and the case that he lost, and the case of this member and the transfer station. And so I think the reason I wanted to tell you this story is it illustrates three really important things about the MIA B.C. First of all, that we have the expertise in defending municipal liability claims to be able to provide really tangible and practical risk management advice to our members. Secondly, we take a really proactive, supportive approach. We reach out to our members, and rather than being sort of punitive and saying, "You know, we recognize this risk, you need to address this, or there's going to be a consequence," we try and provide them with tools and support and information and advice to be able to build stronger communities and safer communities. Because we're in this business for the same reason that you're in this business of local government, to support communities in British Columbia. That's the whole reason we exist. And then the third thing about that story that I'd like to highlight is that we do have numerous programs in place to be able to support our communities. In fact, I had a member advisory group meeting during the UVCM last week, and Stuart Horn, who's the C.A.O. of the Central Kootenay Regional District, commented that he thought that staff accessing our value-added services saved them the equivalent of a .5 FTE of staff time, and allowing them to build a stronger, safer community. If you're interested in looking at the risk management grants, such as the fencing that Tom referred to, they're in Appendix 2 of your materials, and there's quite a list of the things that we've helped to provide for the town of Comox. I'm happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation or following. Feel free to email me. But for now, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Westbrook.
Thank you, Megan. The main reason why I'm here, because when I was a member of council for the first three years, and then later mayor for 19 years, I didn't really care about the line of insurance on our budget. We've got 42 pages of stuff. This is a small item, and nobody, and I know some of you are campaigning, nobody's going to go to anybody's door and say, "You know what? I'm going to save you money on insurance." Nobody's going to care about that. They want to know about how you're going to have public safety, how you're going to keep the public development, and how to deal with homelessness. So I wasn't really interested either. And then somebody at a UVCM meeting about, I guess 16 years ago, said, "Do you care about numbers?" I said, "I love numbers. Well, come to the meeting of MIA, you hear lots of numbers." To make a long story short, I became a board member and then chair for six years. And I brought information from those meetings to our town, and we talked about having staff people calling MIA office. And I said, "How do you feel about calling our MIA office? Because I'm on the other side now, I want to see how this works." And they said, "Well, it's like an extension of our services, extension of our work that we do. I can just phone up, and you can ask Tyler the same thing." She used to be our corporate administrator, excellent worker, he did well, he selected a good person for that job. And so she would say that you can just phone up and leave it with them, whether it's a claim, or risk management issue, or prevention, or dealing with a potential claim, you can call MIA, and there's somebody there. It's like phoning another city, another town. We have a town hall-type building in Vancouver, so we're actually there, we made a presence, and we've done well here 30 years. But 30 years ago, it was visionary to start MIA B.C., because we couldn't get insurance. It was very expensive, or very poor coverage, very unstable rates. So the courage of, people like to sell, so your predecessor forty, thirty years ago, said, "Let's take this on ourselves," and we become each other insurers and each other insurers. So we have a risk management exchange program where we cover each other's with our full resources. One of the staff went to a risk management program and came back and said, "You know, some of these councillors have taken flaps of beer to the public workshop after they've done a good job removing snow, or they fixed a leak. Don't do that." MIA B.C. said, "You." So, you know, we learn these things from where you go to meetings and you pick up staff. But the main thing why I'm here is that I want to keep us together, because that's what builds our strength. And as you heard, it's not just the cost of premium, it's all the money you've got back over the years in grants and dividends, or in your equity share of the MIA B.C. So if you look at that, and you deduct $40,000 a year on average, actually more than that, you're looking at a pretty competitive rate. But my dad was a farmer. He told me the story when I was just a kid, and I remember it so well, because the farmers were being hosed by feedstock providers and people who bought their animals and then took them to the stock market, to the market, different stock market than the one in Bay Street. And so they decided to get their own co-op together, building their own plants for feedstock and hiring people to sell their cows and pigs, and they get to pay the commission to keep their profit. But then after a while, some of the farmers were approached by very ambitious private operators, and said, "You know, we can sell you the feedstock for less, and we can provide you a better salesperson to get more money for your livestock." So some of them left. And of course, everybody talks, farmers talk to each other, and you find out what they're getting. And so more and more left. Pretty soon, the overhead was too big for the few that were left, and pretty soon, the co-op folded, and my dad said, "We're right back to where we were when we started." It was very hard to get decent prices and competitive quotes on my product. So I'm just saying, I don't want to see that happen. 30 years ago, we were visionary, and Comox was part of the vision. Thirty years ago, we were visionary and Comox was part of the vision, let me state it. Thank you.
Thanks, Curtis. I just want to just tell you one little story to wrap up. And we're in a public meeting, so I can't tell you who the characters of this story are. But it's a story about a town, a city, and a regional district. And no, they didn't go to a bar yet. They had, at some point, decided that they needed a, I think, some sort of water service or a sewage, sewage treatment plant service or a shared service. And as is often the case, the regional district agreed to build and operate this, but it was going to recover the cost back by charging back the town and the city. And at some point, it was supposed to be done by having a gauge of some sort determine the usage of this system. And at some point, the town discovered the gauge wasn't accurate. And it felt it had been overcharged a significant amount of money, like well into the seventh figures. And so the town and the regional district and the city got into negotiations about how to deal with the situation. And the negotiations were, I think, could get heated at times and they weren't productive. And I found out about this one day last year when Sherman Chow, our claims manager, came into my office. And Sherman has two ways to tell me about something. One is he gives me a heads up. And the other is he gives me an FYI. Heads ups are bad. FYIs are like, we can handle this. And he came in to give me a heads up. And he said, the regional district had called him, explained the situation and wanted to know if there was anything we could do. And I, I listened to it and I, here's the problem when you're a licensed insurance company. The law is really clear about what you can do with respect to coverage. And one is, you can't make a coverage decision until you got a claim. I said, is there a claim? No, no, they're just, they're just asking. I said, yeah, they're asking for a contribution to try and break this law jam. But we don't have any money of our own, it's our members' money and we can only use it the way our members want us to, which is through this coverage thing. And that's not the answer anybody wants. And then we thought, man, I have a hard time seeing how this claim could be brought that's going to be covered. Because it's like if a bank puts $100,000 by mistake into your checking account and you spend it. And then the bank comes someday and says, whoo, you've got $100,000 of money of ours that you shouldn't have, you need to pay it back. And you know what? The law's pretty clear that you're going to do that. And I said, that's not what anybody wants to hear. And by this point, we'd figured out all three of these local governments are members of the MIBC. And I said, you know, this is even worse, because we're not helping and they're having a problem resolving this and no good's going to come of this. They don't want to hear about coverage and laws and claims, they just got a problem and they want it to be solved. And I said, you know, I have a friend that I used to practice law with, who's got about 30 years' experience doing engineering and construction work. And I understand he started a mediation practice a couple of years ago. So why don't we see, and offer this, is tell everybody, we will hire Kerry to go up and do a mediation, hear everybody out. And if he can't figure out a way to settle it, he will give them a legal opinion so at least they know they've been heard and get his impression of how this would be resolved if it went to trial. So that was fine and we arranged that. Kerry and Sherman went off and they met. And I think over the course of a couple of days, it was not easy, but the negotiations were successful and perhaps not happily, but all three of the parties wound up resolved in the matters that settled. Now, that cost us somewhere between $15,000 to $20,000. We didn't charge anybody for it and we're never going to charge anybody for it. But the reason we did that wasn't because it was our legal obligation to do it. The reason we did that was because these were three of our owners who owned our operation. And we just thought that's the way they would expect their company to behave. And that's, that's what sets us apart. Insurance is something that the insurance industry has turned into a commercial commodity that you sell by price. And we've taken that, and with that sort of approach or culture, we've turned that into something that's the character of the community. And you're part of our community and we'd like to see you stay there. So if there's any questions, we will take them. Other than that, we know you've got an agenda to get to. But thank you for being so respectful and listening.
Well, thank you for your reports and I'll open it up to questions from council if there are any. Councilor Price.
Thank you very thorough report and information package. And what percentage, you mentioned 170 municipalities within the association. What would you say is the percentage of DC that's...
I'm sorry, I'm going to stand whether that's required or not. I think it's respectful and I've got too many years of being a court. I'm just not used to making submissions sitting down. There are, at last count, a key changing, 189 municipalities in DC. So rounding, we have about 90% of them. But I told you, we do things per capita basis. So we have, it varies, but probably about 55% by population. Generally speaking, the very large communities, our largest member is the city of Richmond. But generally speaking, you know, like the Bernabes, Deltas, Vancouver, they, they have their own thing. And then there's a handful of other local governments that just, they don't buy into the concept of pooling, they think they can make better deals on their own. And that's a, that's an entirely valid and legitimate decision to make.
And do you have many people pulling out and coming back or is it...
We do not. We, we, over 30 years, we've probably, I think it's five members have left. And two of them are very large, you know, very large municipalities with over 120,000. So they have their own risk management department, legal department and whatever. So that's, that's, might be six, but I'm pretty sure it's only five.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? No, I will just say thank you very much for your report and the hard copy information as well. I know that's going to be useful and I suggest that we'll be discussing this matter upon the return of the mayor. And this has been helpful for us in our discussion.
Well, thank you very much.
So thank you. You're not expected to stay, you're welcome to. Mayor Tunis, you can see how council works very effectively and...
Yeah. I thought we learned something. Now I know how to do it.
Thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, council, moving along here. We have no amendments to be, but we'll move to department reports. Go. And we'll start with the fire department report. Can I ask for a receipt of the fire department report? Are there any questions for our chief in regards to that? Chief, are there any important comments you'd like to make in regards to your report?
Thank you for the opportunity. I think we've covered it all in the report. This is continuing to be busy, of course.
Thank you for your May to August 2018 report. We'll move along now to planning and building department.
Please receive.
Any questions? All those in favor? Most questions, sorry.
The mixed-use commercial, a 42-unit residential development on Guthrie Road. Have you seen it in...
Now, our planners not here, I'll refer that to our senior.
I believe that is Guthrie and McDonald's.
Oh, okay.
P. Jesus is on the...
Yes.
So, oh, okay.
Right on the corner border there.
Forty-two, but 42-year residential development. In that big vacant lot then?
Yes.
But we haven't actually seen a cousin come to us.
Not yet. No, it's, I think, I think there were just some initial concepts that came to the planning department and it's working its way through. You should be receiving something within, I guess, the next two months.
And do you have any idea if it's rental or home?
I believe it's going to be targeted for the ownership market.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one question and the planner's not here, so sorry, but there's a development going on the corner of Noel and Anderson. Apparently 15 units. And of course, when you're out there at election time, talking to people, you go to the doors and we know nothing about it and yet the neighborhood seems to know quite a bit about it. And it's really difficult for us, again, I bring this up, issue up, but it's, when you get, you know, the guys are asking me some pretty intricate questions and I've no answer for them, I've never even seen it, didn't know anything about it. So I'm not sure how we solve that, but it's a long going.
I think it has been brought up before, Councilor Grant. I appreciate you bringing that up again. Good question.
I could add that, it was publicized and there was an open house about two weeks ago, last week, at the rec center upstairs, it's a Dawn Cameron development. And so, yeah, it was, it was out there in the community. And I think it'll feed us.
Well, come second.
Perhaps we could ask for the developer to include us in the invitation or not?
Well, the whole intent of this process was to counteract the negative reaction that council would receive through the public hearing process. In that, it was, those comments were deemed to be too late in the game to make any significant changes. So we've implemented the notion that the developer goes to the community and speaks to the community first to identify any concern, to try and work through those with the neighborhood, even before submission of a formal application to the town. The normal course of events is that we, once we receive application, then we notify council that it's, it's within the work stream. But we can, we can look at trying to at least advise you of what's being considered.
That's all I'm thinking is, is we do, because I think the paper's not always delivered to me or in a timely manner, so.
Well, we need to know which neighborhoods to avoid, right?
That's right.
I got a list of them.
So that would just be helpful. And then we could decide whether we were able to attend or not, but to sort of not know it all is sometimes awkward.
And of course, you're always welcome to attend these, but it's not, the whole intent is, is so that the community speaks directly to the developer and not, not to you, which is their, which is the natural kind of reaction, is that they want you to make a stated position or a decision at that time. And that's what we don't want to happen. We want the process kind of developer.
Yeah, and I get that, but it would just be good to know that, so you're not completely taken off guard, right?
Yeah.
Just in closing, I might just mention, and it may be wise when new council, that in orientation for new council members, that those types of things be brought up as initiation for them, as well as returning councilors, so we can avoid being put in that position in the future. Okay, moving along to parks and property management report, I was received.
Please receive.
Any questions? No?
I had a, I had a small question, just a very small question, but still. Brooklyn Creek is always a place, our very favorite place to walk. And during the summer, I was walking along and there was a mom with her little boy and the little boy was having a wonderful time throwing rocks into the creek. And so we stopped and chatted. And she said, oh, he's become on a regular basis, he loves throwing in, he throws a bunch in every day. Oh, that's nice. So of course, one wonders now, what does that do to the integrity of the creek and the riparian and all of those wonderful things that we think of when we think of our, our Brooklyn Creek? I didn't, I didn't say it into her at the time, other than enjoy the day, but I certainly didn't feel comfortable with it.
I'll pass on the comment to Health Fazer.
Perfect.
Yeah. Let's see what, see what can be done or whether we need to put in kind of best practices with behavior signage along the corridor or something.
Maybe just a little reminder. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Move along to a report from Recreation Department. Please receive. And are there any questions for Recreation Director?
I'm just glad to see that we have the online registration now. Is that running smoothly? The lips have worked out or it's, it sounds like...
Policies go so far, knocking it away loudly, but have only had good feedback or no feedback, which is exactly what I wanted.
And I have to say, I like that you're including parks in the Recreation Magazine, that wide view of recreation, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Councilor Grant.
Hi, Dan. Just a quick question. I noticed in your, in your report that you had over 900 residents in the free fitness class and of course, the free admission of the fitness studio. Just wondering what kind of results you get from, from that kind of advertising?
Boy, you put me on the spot there. We didn't track the, we didn't track the attendance other than just taking numbers.
Okay. I know how successful things are at our community center, there's no question about that. Yes, but I just thought, wow, that many people taking advantage of it speaks loudly as well.
You raise a good point, though, that we can next year, similar to our Customer Appreciation Day, do some polling of our, of our customers. And that would be an excellent day to do it.
We love to brag about GUC, so it's good to have you.
And I'd love to be able to answer your questions, so I will certainly add to the survey next year's...
Oh darn, I won't be here on that meeting.
Say the results.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. I'm pleased to see that the Marina Sales buildings are being booked. I'm fairly glad to hear that you're coming to the Philippines. Well, that's really encouraging. It was a bit of a conundrum when they first came, so, yeah, it's good, great.
Thank you, Councilor Swift, I was going to add to that. That's amazing, 62 contracts, hook between May 1st and August 31st.
Yeah, you got the quarterly, but...
I can get that.
Yep, remember.
Councilor Grant and Councilor Price, yes.
You good?
He was busy writing.
Oh, okay.
One more question, this time from the seniors team. They have such a tremendous membership. And with that membership, of course, comes an awful lot of activity classes and such that they're famous for. And the problem is they're running out of time and space. So they asked me the question, one, about, of course, twin sales, but were concerned about the size. So in that discussion, I then went, oh, what about our community center? Is there any space up there for us to do our IP, et cetera, et cetera? So I don't know if I'm, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I can certainly discuss this with you later, but is it worth talking or are you all loaded?
We're pretty chock block between rentals and programs, but I'm always happy to discuss how we can find a way.
Okay, okay. Perhaps I'll, I'll tell them to come speak to you.
Have your people talk to my people.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Councilor Price?
Yes, and getting back to the sales building, during nautical days, I was helping man the museum exhibit there. And so we had quite a few people coming through and, and comments on the building and people at the sailing club and those who are located down on the waterfront and were part of the process by which we got the development plan together. And they had some ideas, you know, because they're sometimes struggling how to use them and they seem to have some ideas. And I wonder if there was any thought of calling together the big, the main user groups just to get some feedback on, you know, what's the impediment to using them? Is there anything that we can do that could make it more usable to your group, you know, at this stage in it?
Are you suggesting that, just so I understand, that the Marina Park users would be able to suggest ways that they could use the sale buildings?
Well, I heard, you know, I got one or two people from the sailing club through and one thing they mentioned that things that you couldn't affect, you know, the size, that it was too small for this or too, and didn't work for that. But they had some practical things like for classroom use that the tables... But they had some practical things, like for classroom use, that the tables that we had at the rec center might be more appropriate, and I just, you know, rather than me writing down their feedback, and I just thought, is there any avenue whereby, or if it's a questionnaire out to the groups, you know, the larger groups, rather than the, you know, the mump hop and party people booking it individually, that the groups out there, just to find out if they're, you know, what they think of them, or the things that could happen that would make it, you know, expand the use. I mean, it looks like we're getting lots of use out of them, but the more we book them, I think, the better.
I can bring that instruction to our facility booking staff person, and then when she's discussing the facility booking options, if the sale buildings aren't to the bookers' liking, or they are, she can start to understand what would be needed to increase the bookings, or what the impediment is to them.
That would be very helpful. And I do have to commend the front desk, too, because I was booking an upstairs room in the rec center from the profit, and it wasn't available, and they said, ah, but there are the sales buildings, so they're definitely promoting their usage and that.
Good.
Yeah. But thank you. If there are things that we can make them even better, that would be great.
Thank you, Counselor Price. Any other questions? Moving along to public works, capital operational stance, and will receive.
Sir.
And any questions? No questions? Shelley is waiting there, anxious to answer the questions.
Tom's excited as the ref to firm an idol.
Nobody dropped a beard off to her after we heard that.
Thank you for that, Counselor Arna.
I'll take it.
All reports have been received, then, staff reports, the McLeod, McLeod Street and Douglas Street Infrastructure Improvement Project.
Will receive.
And that is that staff be directed to tender the construction works of McLeod and Douglas Street in early 2019, and also increase the budget to 382,000. Can we have a comment from our, our staff?
Yeah, I'm totally questioning why we're asking for the increase in budget, so we're just kind of trying to set us up that we can have success and proceed with this project. So looking that if the new reality, the construction costs are gone out, that we do have the financial already secure, but also be optimistic that if we get it out to tender really early, that we will come below. So that's what we're hopeful for, so that's the, why you see the increase in budget in tendering early as well.
Thank you for clarifying your intent. Are there any questions in regards to that?
I moved that we received this. I meant to move the recommendation, so I have that.
So, anybody?
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor? That's carried. And I think that's it, your staff reports, so move to correspondence. There's none. And the last item here is, there was an amendment to it, recognition of Comox First Nations by the town. And Counselor Price, I believe you wanted to speak to this in regards to our council.
Yes, and I hope everyone had a chance to read the report. I just did it today, so my colleagues.
You're referring to the addendum?
The addendum, yeah.
Does everybody have that in front of them?
So I don't think it helps if I move the motion and speak it out there, I think. And so I would move that the motion of the addendum, that Comox explores with KFN the feasibility of developing appropriate signage to acknowledge that Comox is located in the traditional territory of the Comox First Nations, and that we take on and point me out that Comox is named after the Comox First Nation, and that we work with KFN by the suitable location or the cadence for the signage.
I need a secondary discussion on that.
So if I may, before we second that, I think that we might be better to go down to number two, the next option, which is maybe the CAO could be the CAO of KFN and discuss this. And the reason I say that is, when we were doing the gateway sign out there, we engage with First Nations quite a bit, and they have quite a few criterias and things that you have to meet before you would get involved with that. They have specific symbols and specific, it's harder than you think, is I, I guess what I'm saying. So it might be a better way to have our CAO just speak to their CAO and get some background on this before we jump into a motion.
Fair enough, and I'll point well notice, but we need a secondary to have the discussion on the motion, and then we can move on. Is there a secondary for the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second, and discussion then on the motion.
Yeah. So is there discussion, again, with the Comox First Nations of having reciprocal, you know, this, this air of reconciliation, and I'm just wondering if there's been that discussion, that they, they recognize the town of Comox, and we recognize them. It would be nice to see a two-way dialogue going on with that.
That's a very good comment. I was talking to Counselor Mark Grant earlier on, and she pointed out that it would be good to have it the focus of honoring our relationship. And this came out of the two days that some of us, four of us were involved in, of the government-to-government engagement sessions down at KFN that they hosted, and I think they really were showing how they wanted, you know, to work together, understand each other, and so that's what this, the idea came out of. So I like that idea, you know, honoring our relationship, and the fact that they are our neighbors, that we enjoy them, and so I, and one of the things coming out of that was that the CAOs in the valley and with KFN would meet on a semi-regular basis. So it just seemed that this would be a good thing to take, rather than us, you know, running with an idea and say, look what we've done, and seeing if, you know, if there is interest in, in having that sort of publicly declared, maybe at the entrance to the town with a welcome to Comox. And the fact that we do, you know, Comox is named after the Comox First Nation, it's, you know, pointing out our interconnectivity and, you know, and honoring our relationship, we see.
Counselor Price, your intentions are noble, and I think we all agree with that. I think the point brought up by Counselor Grant is a good one, is that perhaps the motion would.
Yes, or could I refer it to our CAO?
I think refer it to the CAO, but the spirit of your motion.
Yeah, so this motion that we, the recognition happened between both, and look to something that might be feasible in that regard.
So I think we'll have to vote on the motion here first.
And maybe having, you know, our dual signage on the, on the, our dual logos on the signage, just, you know, to show that we are, we're connected and working together, and we have a positive relationship.
I think those are good intentions, as I've said. We'll go back to the motion, and we'll say, all those in favor of the motion?
So we defeat the motion, and then?
Well, I think we were referring them, I guess I could move to refer this to our CAO to discuss.
So you're withdrawing the motion, then?
Or referring the motion as it is.
For discussion.
Yes, so referring it to a conversation between our CAO and C.
I understand. Counsel, and all of those in favor of that suggestion from Counselor Price? Good. Let's move on. CAO, you're comfortable with that?
Yep.
Good. Thank you, then. I don't see anything else on the agenda, except for adjournment. Am I missing anything?
I'll move that.
Full termination.
And I have a secondary. All those in favor? Thank you, Stan, and Counselor.
You're off the hot seat.